Good morning and welcome to the December twelfth County Council meeting if we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Present.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. Gantz.
Here.
Mr. Mokel.
He said here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Here.
Mr. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Piper.
Oh, here. All right, questions from the public may be directed to countycouncildist@co.dellaware.in.us. Again, that's county council, D-I-S-T at co.dellaware.in.us. Denise has the agenda posted. At this time I'll entertain approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yeah, he's here.
He's.
Can you hear us Jim?
We just can't hear him, he can hear us.
Have you muted yourself Jim?
I am.
No.
I think there's.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Wyatt.
Aren't we doing?
Agenda.
What was it, here's the assets.
Yeah.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, at this time I'll entertain an approval of the November twenty first County Council minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna say motion by Eugene, second by Dan on that one. Roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Jim? Can you give us a thumbs up for yes? There it is, all right.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Upstain. All right, and at this time I'll entertain the approval of the November twenty eighth Special Council Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Upstain.
Mr. Mokel.
Thumbs up.
Mr. Webb.
Upstain.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right. All right, we'll move on to our transfer and appropriation agenda. You're up Tanya.
Alrighty, first step under County General, we have Circuit Court, one thirty eight. One ninety six, part-time probation officer, negative seven thousand eight twelve twenty five. One ninety seven, part-time court administration, negative two thousand five sixteen fifty four. A one sixty, probation officer, negative one ninety six seventy nine. B one fifty five, probation officer, negative one thousand two oh five sixty eight. One eighty five transcripts, negative seven sixty eight ninety three. Two eleven, office supplies, positive seven hundred and seventy five dollars. Three twenty four, subscription and dues, negative nine hundred and ten dollars. Three ninety six grand jurors, negative seven hundred and seventy five dollars. Three ninety eight witness fees, negative five hundred dollars. Four forty one, office equipment, positive fourteen thousand nine fifty two ninety five. Four fifty two law books, negative one thousand forty two seventy six, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, any questions?
I have questions. So, what is exactly the, um, you looking at me like that for? Somebody said that they thought their boxes were in the line and it turned out that it wasn't.
No, ours are, yeah, I have, uh, where we've got over five hundred, six hundred thousand copies on them. We've had several service calls over the past few years. They're getting to be where we, they can't replace parts on ours. Ours were all purchased in two thousand fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. Uh, it was Lisa, Lisa from prosecutor that actually doesn't need to replace hers, but ours we have to replace.
And did, you know, refresh my memory, did you say anything about this in your budget for next year?
We did not because we didn't know about it till after budgets were turned in.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Yes. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes, thank you.
Next is clerk one twenty five, we have B one oh nine deputy clerk, negative one thousand two hundred dollars. C one oh nine deputy clerk, positive one thousand two hundred dollars. A one twenty nine deputy clerk, negative four thousand dollars. B one twenty nine deputy clerk, positive four thousand dollars, per total transfer of zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, I should mention that these were all favorable, um, by the Finance Committee last week, so. Uh, any questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Thank you.
Communications, one twenty four, we have C one eleven communication tech, negative six hundred dollars. C one fourteen communication tech, negative one thousand dollars. D one oh one communication tech, negative ten thousand dollars. D one twenty communication tech, negative two thousand dollars. D one twenty four communication tech, negative two thousand dollars. I one oh nine, that should be I one oh nine, everyone needs to note that, it looks like left no nine. Negative one thousand dollars. One ninety six overtime, neg, is positive, ten thousand dollars. One ninety four training, positive seven thousand five hundred dollars. One seventy three health insurance, negative twelve thousand four hundred dollars. Two twenty six uniforms, positive six thousand five hundred dollars. Four forty one miscellaneous equipment, positive five thousand dollars, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, any questions?
Do you wanna go over your plan?
The uniforms though? Yeah, so I put in uniforms for next year's budget, they got cut, so we found some extra money this year. Sorry, I put in some money next year for uniforms in the budget, it got cut, so I talked to several of council members. It's, this is to actually buy the uniforms this year. Um, we already have the invoice, so we had the money to do it, so we're transferring it into the line.
Would you like to share how you're doing the uniform process?
So, we came up with a price of a hundred and eighty dollars per person, so they will have a hundred and eighty dollars credit at the company down in Grandville and they'll go in and pick what they want as long as it's low though. Um, that's pretty much the only rule, so they'll be able to get sweatshirts or polo shirts or button up shirts, whatever they want, so.
And then you had mentioned about what you may be giving back this year.
Yeah, I'm guessing we'll get back over a hundred thousand dollars, I don't have a number, but, um, looking at the budget, I'm pretty comfortable it'll be about what it was last year, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a question about the miscellaneous equipment.
Yep, so that is, there's some computer monitors that we purchased for the Tahoe, there's some canopies that we purchased, um, to keep us out of the weather when we're outside. It's just some miscellaneous stuff that I waited until the end of the year to buy to make sure that we actually had the money to do it.
Okay. And then all the rest are just employee bills and stuff like that? I should probably mention that for those sitting in the audience, but it looks like a lot of these are just one employee leaving and another employee taking their place, so if it looks like we just kinda go through without questions, that's what that is. It's just another employee taking that employee's place, so that was important for you guys to all know, that most of you probably already do. And now, this particular request has a lot of those in there as well, correct?
It ha, well, it has extra money coming out of lines that we didn't pay people to put into overtime.
Where they had openings?
Yeah, to put into overtime.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, under EMS, one fifty five, we have E one seventy seven advanced EMT, negative four thousand four hundred dollars. One ninety six overtime, positive four thousand four hundred dollars. One ninety five holiday pay, negative nine thousand dollars. One ninety six overtime, positive nine thousand dollars, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, any questions?
Um, I do have a question on this. So, a couple times, I've asked a question about holiday pay and the answer that I've been given, I think even Jim asked about it the last meeting, was that it's basically an overtime line item.
Not for EMS, it is not.
Cause that's what I was wondering, why are we paying, pulling holiday pay to go to overtime, so educate me.
So, holiday pay, you, at EMS you are paid straight pay all year and then twice a year you get a holiday, uh, pay added on to your paycheck, June and December, uh, for all the holidays that you have worked, because we don't pay overtime or holiday pay at that time, it's straight time. So then, twice a year you get it. Well, we have had a lot of employees who, um, have left, um, came in and did not get the full holiday pay, cause if you don't, if you're not here the first six months or if you don't start until Christmas, you're not gonna get paid for Thanksgiving and all that. So, we had a lot of excess money in holiday pay this year because we had a couple people on workers comp and when you're on workers comp or FMLA, you don't get paid the holiday pay.
So your holiday pay is the way that I envisioned that all the other holiday pay should have been?
Maybe.
I mean, that's.
Whatever you want, it.
Well, what you described is what I thought all the other holiday pay was, but I was informed that those are just another fancy word for overtime.
Yeah, with EMS it is not, yeah, it's not overtime for us at all. It is holiday pay, because we don't, like I said, we don't pay you, if you work Christmas, we don't pay you for Christmas on that pay. You get one check after that, you know, you get that check that has all the holidays you've worked. And we had, we had excess and, so the good thing is I won't need overtime money for the rest of the year. I think we'll make it through.
Thanks for explaining it.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes, thank you.
That's a good information, um, now that we can hear Jim clearly.
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking about, is it necessary for us to go back to that question where he gave the thumbs up? Is, is it in the state statute that we have to be seen and heard for its account?
We should kind of hear him, but it was mumbly.
With that one, that he did the thumbs up for him to, now that we can hear him, for him to address that?
He's fine, he, he gave the thumbs up, we noted it and it seems like he's fixed his micro issues. I mean, it's, the minutes will reflect that he answered in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you.
Just clarify.
Great question, all right, next.
Public Defender's Office, one thirty nine, we have one eighty six, or, I'm sorry, three twelve, negative eight thousand dollars. Sorry, that's court ordered attorneys, negative eight thousand dollars. One eighty six attorney fees, positive eight thousand, six fifty seven. One seventy one FICA, negative two thousand one hundred. One seventy two per, positive four hundred dollars. One ninety three health insurance, positive one thousand two fifty. One ninety four life insurance, positive seventy five dollars. One ninety five disability insurance, positive three hundred and forty five dollars. Three ninety nine court interpreters, negative one thousand dollars. Three twenty six investigate, investigator fees, negative five hundred dollars. Three thirteen psychological testing, positive eight hundred and seventy three dollars, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, do we have questions here?
Quick question, Shelley, could you, um, just say for the record why we would need to pay the eight thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars in attorney fees? I believe you said it once before, I just wanted to clarify.
Sure, uh, the court ordered attorney fees are when somebody does, say, a five day murder trial and they're out of their office all day. They do get a stipend from our office or when they do an appeal, which takes a lot of time, um, they get a stipend, uh, for that. So, we've had so many trials this year and long trials, murder trials, and so many appeals from those trials because every conviction gets appealed, that we have, I think for the first time in a long time, ran way short on the court ordered attorney fees. So, the, um, attorney fee line, I have some money left in that and so I've told everybody who turns bill in, and I know we don't like to do this, uh, all, these are non-employed, uh, attorneys that we hire in from the outside due to conflicts and everything. I've told the people who are just now turning in bills that we, they're not gonna get paid until after the first of the year because we've gotta get, uh, the attorneys who are on our payroll, who are doing these work today and last week. We gotta make sure they keep paid up.
That's the part I was getting, I would specify, these are mostly attorneys who are not part of the, our network, Public Defenders, correct? Like out of county or maybe an additional attorney, um, if cases are overloaded or a conflict of interest?
The attorney fee line, the court ordered attorneys is that. The attorney fee line is the stipend they get when they're out of their office for a week or when they spend three days doing an appeal of a jury trial.
I apologize, you pulled it from that line to me for the other one.
Yes.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Next is treasure, one twenty seven, fifth two eleven office supplies, cost of five hundred dollars. Three twelve bank fees, negative nine hundred and eighty seven dollars and five cents. Three twenty five printing, negative eight hundred and sixty two dollars and seventy eight cents. Four forty two computers, cost of one thousand three forty nine eighty three, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, Brad, do you wanna talk about your two kind of specialized pieces here that you're purchasing?
Yes, um, so in the office supplies, we had our cash counter, the counterfeit detector. Oh, I'm sorry, crap, uh, Delaware County Treasure. Um, so we had the cash counter, the counterfeit detector, that is one machine, um, go down on us November third, which taxes were due the thirteenth, so it was a necessary, uh, to, we had to have that. Um, so we ordered from Thomas and, and got it on Monday, so we didn't have any disruption of service there. Um, so that one was right at five hundred dollars for that. Um, the other, uh, on the computers, it's one I asked for in my budget and then it was cut, um, was the Quiadis computer, it's the computer that solely, um, First Merchants, that's who we deposit the money with for the Quiadis, for the county, and, um, it is outdated, it's over six years old and it will not support the software from First Merchants. So, that was, that's a necessity that we have that, obviously, all the departments want to, uh, have their money deposited and the county does as well, so I believe that is, um, the two things that mainly those two transfers are relating to. Oh, no, when we were doing the budget and we were asking department heads if there's anything they can give back, did you refresh our memory of, I'm pretty sure you gave something back. I did, well, and, and actually, we're gonna be able to, on, um, the bank fees and printing, there's still money there. That's gonna be a total probably seven thousand and then there's all the other, probably, most of the other line items are something given back, you know, so. Um, probably in the neighborhood of around eight or nine thousand dollars. Bring that up because at the end of the year, a lot of people, a lot of taxpayers get concerned that, that, that people start taking all their excess money and then they start following it towards their wish list, things they wanna get, let's get new computers, let's get, um, coffee machines, whatever it may be. And I just wanted to take a moment to note that, yes, we did cut this computer and you're back asking for it. Mm-hmm. But you've given us quite a bit of money back and you're still gonna give us even more money back. Right, right. I just thought it was interesting to put that on the record for you. All right.
And it's good investing with the interest.
Yeah, you've done a great job with that. Start, I'm having to start managing my money. The news is I don't have any, you don't have to worry about it.
Do we have any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes. Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to other, first step is supplemental adult fund twenty one hundred. We have line one seventy three, this amount has been reduced to negative twenty seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars. Four forty one office machines, positive twenty seven thousand three hundred and ten dollars, total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Dan, I'm sure we have questions, but lots of computers, right? We have.
Yeah. Emily Anderson, Court Administrator, so, um, as we looked at the supplemental fees, which is a non-reverting fund, so this all comes back into their account. Um, we had already earmarked for the twenty twenty three budget, health insurance with that increase as we do every year. Um, so we were looking at that extra money and we knew that we were gonna have to start replacing laptops because he had purchased laptops with a grant in twenty twenty with pandemic money. Um, the probation officers use laptops, uh, because they are in court and that's what they use in court. So, um, we asked for a quote from Jim and when I put this in, I didn't have that quote yet, so that's why it's been reduced, for, um, the laptops and then also Surface Pros, which is just a smaller, it's just a tablet. Some wanted the Surface Pros and some wanted laptops, so fifteen laptops and five Surface Pros and then, uh, we have to pay for Microsoft Office on each, so twenty Microsoft Office purchases, which is where we get the twenty seven thousand three ten. So, since we already had it earmarked, we thought we'd, we'd go ahead and get it purchased because, you know, the laptops only last about three to four years until they start slowing down and they use those every day in court.
You said non-reverting fees, maybe we'll, somebody from the council can help you with this. Are you saying that the money isn't spent, it doesn't go back to the County General?
Well, we're in other right now, Ryan.
Right, it goes back into their account, maybe.
I didn't even see that.
Yeah, we're not in County General.
It goes back to their money, so we thought we'd go ahead and appropriate it and use it.
Okay.
This year, otherwise we just have to come back next year and do it.
That's fine, it doesn't quite.
There you go.
Yeah, we're into other, we're into their, their fees that they collect.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any additional questions?
I, I just have one last question.
Yeah.
Are they laptops that you're replacing or just getting additional?
So, in twenty twenty he got a bunch with grant money when pandemic hit, so they can work remotely. So all of those are getting the, you know, where they're getting, starting to get slow and not working very well. So, tho, they already have laptops they're using that we're replacing those.
They have to use laptops.
In the court, yes.
The reason why I'm asking, I know our IT guy kinda is prone to desktops.
They also have desktops.
They have to have the laptops.
They have both.
Okay.
They have both.
Well, I know too, we talked about it in Finance Committee, that there are updates going out now that, like, my Surface here won't take the newest version of Windows. And so when you can't update Windows and you're.
You have to replace.
Gotta replace the whole machine.
But yes, they have, they have desktops which are newer, we don't have to replace those, but the, the laptops were all purchased with the grant in twenty twenty and they're all starting to get slow and, but they also use the laptops in court, so they all sit in court with their laptops and use them.
So what are you gonna do, what do you guys do with all the laptops when you get, when you replace them?
So, what I do with any equipment that I replace, I ask IT to tell me, is there anything we can keep and use as backup? Is there anything we can sell, like, I don't just tell them to trash it, they tell me what they can do with it. Right, I have done that, he's, he's asked me, hey, can we give this to so and so because they have something, they don't have the funds and they, and I have given some computers to other departments.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we have community corrections, twenty five oh one. One thirty eight peer recovery coach, negative twenty six thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Three eleven contractual services.
Three eleven contractual services, positive twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Three sixty-two building lease, positive three thousand six hundred dollars. Total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question by Ryan, second by Dan. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Could you tell me what the contractual services are?
Ms. Ritchie, community corrections, those are our home detention monitoring fees that we have to pay out. And our client list has almost doubled, as far as, because the jail's been fuller, so we've been getting more people out. So, that's just to pay my bill.
So, that's why it wasn't budgeted, because it's more than what you expected it to be. What about the building lease?
That I can't answer to. I just took over a couple months ago, for some reason, I don't know why. It's been the same every single month, we're just thirty-six hundred dollars short in that line, so.
As you mentioned to us in Finance, that it's a ten thousand two hundred dollars each month for your lease.
Correct, yeah. So, I don't know why they didn't budget that when they did the budget in twenty-twenty-two, but I'm short that thirty-six hundred dollars.
So, you're saying that the dollar amount hasn't changed, it's just that whatever was budgeted for that line item for the year, whoever put it in didn't calculate it correctly?
I think it's because they had actually had a couple months the previous year that they didn't have to pay the building lease, because they were doing catch-up from COVID. So, I think that that's probably why the dollar amount didn't match, but I'm not a hundred percent for sure.
So, if not the new, just same lease, just a correction on the dollar amount?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Thank you.
Public Defender's Office supplemental, twelve hundred, that should be ten twelve hundred. We have one ninety-nine longevity, positive two thousand dollars. One eighty-four file maintenance, negative four hundred and ninety dollars. Three fourteen witness fees, negative five hundred and thirty dollars. Three twenty-two postage, negative two hundred and thirty dollars. Three twenty-three traveling expenses, negative two hundred and fifty dollars. Three twenty-four dues and subscriptions, negative five hundred dollars. Total transfer is zero.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question by Ryan, second by Dan. Do we have any questions?
I have one quick question.
Yep.
Why would longevity not have been included in the budget?
I knew you were going to ask that question. Shelley Harvey, Office Administrator, Public Defender's Office. I don't know why. I went back and looked at my chart, and two attorneys I just did not include when I did my budget last year. That's why I went ahead and am using my supplemental funds, because it was my mistake. I'm using my supplemental funds, so it won't come out of county general in any way, to make up for that and paying the two people longevity.
So, just a mistake, and you found a way to fix it? All right.
And I will say that during Finance, I asked the question of, this adjustment was made for twenty-four, and you found it after budgets, right? So, we'll have to make this adjustment next year too.
Yes, and I will pay it out of supplemental fees last year, or for next year also, because it is a mistake. And so, it shouldn't be coming out of the county's general budget, it should be coming out of our supplemental fund budget.
Is that something you're going to do early in the year, or you can wait till December again?
However the council would prefer is, is fine with me.
I don't figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can wait till later in the year, I don't want to wait till December, because we get our longevity first K. So, I'll do it at some point next year, so that we can.
Whatever works for you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Someone like to read the magic motion there?
Motion to approve financial transfers in the men's salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Don't believe we have any ordinances or resolutions, so we'll move on to, excuse me, appointments and committee reports. Do we happen to have any committee reports? I don't, no one messaged me, so. All right, moving on to board appointments. Denise started sheet for all of us, and then I sent you all an email last night, where the same spreadsheet, kind of added, we added a few other items that are council-specific. And then, across the top, you'll see highlighted in yellow, with an asterisk, the individuals who are currently sitting on those boards and have contacted us to seek reappointment to those boards. So, I guess what we'll do is we'll just go board by board. If individuals are here and want to take just like a brief moment to introduce themselves, the council received emails and sale mail, even, from interested individuals. So, we've had an opportunity to read through all those, I'm assuming. But if you're here, you're more than welcome to speak for a brief moment. So, we'll start with alcohol beverage board. We have one appointment. The names that were submitted to us are Doug Hutchison, who is our current appointment, Willie Olds, Lisa Bunch, William Delk, Frank Russell, and Christie Fierce. Are any of those individuals here today that wish to speak? You may go to the microphone and introduce yourself there, please.
Yeah, Doug Hutchison, I'm alcohol beverage board. I enjoyed serving this past year, and I hope I get to do it again.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Would you like to go to the microphone? And we got one more.
While we're waiting on that, is there any restrictions on location as far as where you have to live? Like, is it in the county on any of these, or, I mean?
So, we had a question on Daleville and Yorktown, and I had been looking to it, and you do not need to live in those towns. But that was the only one that we had any kind of restriction.
How about the rest of the boards just living within the county?
Delaware County. You took a side yes.
Okay, all right. Was that a yes, is yes they have to live in the county, or a yes?
Yeah, the county, except, with the, well, no, all of them are county, but the specific two that was requested was the Yorktown and Daleville. And those, the only requirements on those statutes is just which authorizing entity fills the positions, but it had no requirement as to where they live, that they didn't specifically say they have to live in Daleville or Yorktown.
I mean, how about the rest of the boards we're filling, do they have to live within the county?
My guess is the specific statutes don't say, so that would be at your discretion.
And as you come up for anybody who's not on a board already, you can just kind of stipulate why you wanted to volunteer for this board, and any relevant experience or anything relative to that.
My name's Willie Olds, I've been living in Delaware County for over fifteen years. I work out at the Delaware County Airport. Just basically put my name in because I'm, I want to get more involved with the community and with what's going on and decisions that are being made. Some decisions I don't agree with, but I can't say anything because I'm sitting at home. So, just thought to throw my name in there, and I feel like my life's experience, I was in the Navy. I feel like I could help out somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a point of clarification, I don't know if this list was shared with all of you, but the spreadsheet that you and I circulated when we went back and looked at these statutes, alcohol beverage board, they have to have been a resident of Delaware County for the past five years. That one specifically.
How are we supposed to know that?
Do I have to bring them?
I don't know if everybody's here. I got a couple of people who aren't here, so would you not consider them then?
That's up to, that's our.
That's up to you.
That's our decision.
Just telling you what the statutes are.
Do we have anyone else with alcohol beverage?
Yes, Lisa Bunch, but I am from Jay County, and I was aware of the Delaware.
Okay, thank you. All right, and that appears to be it, so let's do a roll call on the alcohol beverage.
Sorry, I got an email from Frank that he's sick and with RSV and can't attend, so.
Okay.
Obviously, he was on a couple of these.
Sure, thank you. Roll call on the alcohol beverage board, just state the name of the individual you choose to support.
Mr. Flanagan.
Doug Hutchison.
Mr. Hughes.
Doug Hutchison.
Mr. Cantz.
Willie Olds.
Mr. Mokel.
You were a little garbled, did you say Doug Hutchison?
Mr. Webb.
Select Frank, boss.
Mr. Wyatt.
Doug Hutchison.
Mr. Piper.
Doug Hutchison. All right, congratulations Doug, you get to serve another year.
Thanks for your service.
All right, moving on to animal control. We had a lot of interest in here, but we found out later in the process that we actually have to appoint a veterinarian. So, the names on the list were Dr. Boyce is our current vet appointment to the animal control board. We had William Delk, Harry Hughes, and Christie Fierce. But Dr. Boyce is the only vet, so do we have any other, does anyone else get any information from any other veterinarian? All right, well, roll call on animal control for our veterinarian.
Mr. Flanagan.
Dr. Boyce.
Mr. Hughes.
Dr. Boyce.
Mr. Cantz.
Boyce.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Dr. Boyce.
Mr. Wyatt.
Dr. Boyce.
Piper.
Dr. Boyce. All right, congratulations, and thank you for continuing to serve as our veterinarian at the animal control board. Moving on to Daleville Economic Board, we have one appointment. We have Brent Cheatham, who currently sits on that board. I will remind everyone, this board has never met, so, he jokes that it's the hardest board he's on. So, we've got Brent and then Jared Green. I will entertain roll call on this, please.
Before, before we vote, can I say something about this one?
Yep.
Jessica did mention a couple meetings ago that this board had never met. Obviously, we've been doing what we can as a council to increase participation and interest from the public to sign up for these boards. And even though they've never met, appreciate those who submitted their names, to be considered. My position, obviously I've shared this many times, is I don't like reappointing the same people to boards over and over. I like to get vast inclusion from the community. I'm kind of one of those guys that says, thank you for serving on this board, we'd love to have you serve on another board, but for this particular one, we'd like to have somebody else. In this particular case, being that this board had never even met, I was prepared to suggest that we don't appoint anybody, because if this board's never met, what are we doing? Appoint somebody to a board who's sitting on a board who's never met? Like, I would like to appoint somebody who's always going to garner a board meet. I did get an email from this other gentleman, Jared Green, I called him, spoke with him on the phone, he's interested in being on the board. I would just suggest to the council, if we've already had one person on the board who couldn't get the meetings to even get set, we consider another option.
Well, it has nothing to do with the individual who sits on that board.
Yeah, then. If I was on a board, I'd call up the person running the board and say, let's have a meeting.
I do want to state that Brent lives in Daleville, Jared does not. If that makes any decision, that changes anyone's decision, but Brad, would you like to speak on?
Yeah, I just want to say, I don't have a recommendation on your appointment, but I did want to say that the purpose of this body is in the event that there is a bond issuance that is issued, there's a requirement that there has to be an economic board. So, there's not been a bond issuance, so they've not met for that reason.
Thanks for clarifying that, Brad.
All right, any further questions on this board? All right, roll call please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Brent, Brent Cheatham.
Mr. Hughes.
Brent Cheatham.
Mr. Cantz.
Um, Cheatham.
Mr. Mokel.
Can you hear me now, Jim? So, Brent Cheatham is up for reappointment, and Jared Green is the other individual who's put his name in. Brent Cheatham?
I voted for Brent.
Mr. Webb.
I voted for Jared Green.
Mr. Wyatt.
I'll vote for Jared Green.
Mr. Piper.
Brent, please. All right, thank you Brent for continuing to serve on this board. Moving on to Housing Authority, we found a discrepancy in our spreadsheet. So, last year, we elected three Democrats for that board. This year, we actually have two Republicans to appoint. We have, both of our Republican appointments have expressed interest in serving again on this board. So, this is Forrest Bowers and Bob Wilson. We also have Aubrey Christ and William Delk. I will state, if you guys remember from last year, the Housing Authority, they actually have to go to training out of state, and there's a lot, there's a lot of work that goes into it, and it's pretty time-consuming. So, it's not just a board that meets periodically, there's a lot of travel that does go along with it too, so, and training and certification to be an actual Housing Authority Commissioner. So, again, the names are Forrest Bowers and Bob Wilson as our two that are currently on, and Aubrey Christ and William Delk as our two other options.
Forrest or Bob here?
Yeah, Forrest is right there. I will say too, that, oh, if you guys would like to go to the mic, that their entire board is requesting that these two individuals remain on this board. So, the three that we appointed last year have expressed interest in remitting keeping these two.
What format would you like? Do you want me to introduce myself?
Introduce your name, and who you are, and why you'd like to continue to serve.
Okay, my name's Bob Wilson. I've served on the Housing Authority Board since 2010. I live at three eight hundred East County Road, three fifty north, I've lived there for sixty years. And I've served on several different boards, but I can tell you that this is probably one of the most efficient and well-qualified boards that I've ever been a part of. The people that we have, including Mr. Bowers, they're very knowledgeable in various aspects of housing and construction. My own background, I worked at Delco Battery for thirty-five years, I'm a journeyman pipe fitter. I have my own business, I do construction and remodeling, and I've served the emergency services for forty-seven years at Hamilton Township, including twenty-six years as fire chief. So, I think I've got a varied background that I can contribute to the board. We're getting ready to embark on what may be a very major project, and I would really like to be involved in it. It would enhance the Housing Authority, provide an opportunity to provide better facilities for the residents, and I would appreciate it if I could be reappointed, because I really am looking forward to it. So, any support you can give me, I'd really appreciate it. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Bob. Forrest?
You're up, Forrest.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Forrest Bell Bowers. I reside at toll five North Brentwood Lane, Muncie, Indiana. I'm the oldest member here.
Why about that much?
My birthday next month, but I've been a member of this community since a long time. And I've enjoyed very much serving on this board, and as I reiterate what Bob has stated, working with the members of the board, the composition thereof, and what we're looking at in the future. I would like to continue to do that for the citizens of our community. Appreciate your support, thank you.
Thank you.
Aubrey or William? I can see Aubrey. All right, so roll call on this pick two.
So, just, just these two gentlemen of the four are the ones who showed up for the meeting, correct?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing real well this morning.
I was, I was clarifying that you two gentlemen of the four to be considered were the, were the only two who showed up. So, I just wanted to clarify that for the vote, thank you.
The choose two. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Mr. Bowers and Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Hughes.
Bowers and Wilson.
Mr. Cantz.
Bowers and Wilson.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Well, what's, I'd like to get some new people in here. These are the two gentlemen who showed up, so I'm gonna go with Mr. Wilson and Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Wyatt.
Mr. Wilson or Mr. Bowers?
Mr. Piper.
Mr. Bowers and Mr. Wilson. Thank you gentlemen for serving. All right, the next one, we have a property tax assessment. Uh, this one came up out of, it wasn't on our original list, uh, but it was brought to our attention by the, uh, county assessor. Carrie Wiggerley currently sits on that, uh, board. Uh, uh, Mr. Carmichael would like to see him continue to stay on this board, and he's the one appointment for this board. Roll call on Carrie.
Mr. Flanagan.
Carrie Wiggerley?
Mr. Hughes.
Carrie Wiggerley.
Mr. Cantz.
Wiggerley.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Mr. Wiggerley.
Mr. Wyatt.
Carrie Wiggerley.
Mr. Piper.
Carrie Wiggerley. All right, moving on to the Redevelopment Commission. We get to appoint two to this as well. Uh, our two returning gentlemen who have interest in staying on the Redevelopment Commission are Carrie Wiggerley and Rob Keesling. We also have interest from Amber Green, Aubrey Christ, Michelle Batters, and Willie Olds. Uh, I know Carrie messaged me this morning and he had a family emergency and so he was unable to attend. And Rob Keesling had a work conflict that came up and he was unable to attend this morning. But I know we have a few others in the audience that they'd like to come up and take a brief moment to introduce themselves. We would entertain that now.
Is there a party affiliation with them now? And Amber also, uh, is ill and could not attend.
She's right here.
Oh, wait. Oh, I didn't see you over there.
Miraculous recovery.
Miraculously. Look at there she is. Guess you recovered overnight. All right. Good to know. Sorry, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Batters. I've been, uh, Delaware County resident my whole life. Um, I enjoy serving in our community and would love to have your support to allow me to continue on serving in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amber Green. I've lived in Delaware County my whole life. I currently reside at fifty-five hundred West Autumn Springs Court in Muncie. I own a small business in Muncie. Uh, we were in Yorktown for about a year and a half, so I've owned a business in Yorktown and in Muncie. I am super passionate about growing, um, the small business community, which in turn grows economic development. Um, I have a good working relationship with a lot of the small business owners in our community. I think I have a good handle on what small businesses are looking for, not only to continue to survive and thrive in Delaware County, but what small businesses that are wanting to come to Delaware County are looking for as well. Um, so I would super appreciate your support. I would love to serve the community in this way and further, you know, getting the small business community kind of recognized and growing that, because if we grow that, then we grow the county and I think that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Willie Olds. I've lived in Delaware County for over fifteen years. Um, I wanted to be on this board. I recently had dealings with the Muncie Land Bank. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with that. Purchased piece of land through them, kind of went through the process. I'm in the process of putting a home on said land for my daughter who attends Ball State. And that, that entire process was just really interesting to me to learn all the building codes and the zoning stuff and everything, and I thought, uh, you know, hey, why not put my name in for this board because I think I, I think I've got some valuable ideas that could help the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, roll call, please. Pick two again.
Mr. Flanagan.
I'm gonna go with, uh, Rob Keesling and Michelle.
Mr. Hughes.
Amber Green, Aubrey Christ.
Mr. Cantz.
Uh, Amber Green and Rob Keesling.
Mr. Mokel. I didn't get that.
I believe one was Amber Green.
What was your second choice, Mr. Mokel?
And?
Who was your other choice?
Mr. Webb.
Uh, first choice is gonna be with Amber Green. Really torn between Michelle and Rob, but I'm gonna go ahead and select Mr. Keesling.
Mr. Wyatt.
I'm gonna go with Rob Keesling and Carrie Wiggerley.
Mr. Piper.
I'm gonna go with Rob Keesling and Aubrey Christ. Uh, it looks like we've got Rob with six and Amber with four. Is that what you have Denise?
That's what I've got.
All right, congratulations. All right. Moving on to Regional Wastewater, we have one vote here. We have Joe Boyce, who is currently serving on that board and would like to seek reelection to that board. We also have received messages, uh, from that board asking that she remain, um, on that board. We also have Frank Russell, Amber Green, and Aubrey Christ. Or is anyone, Joe's here, would you like to speak?
Good morning, Joe Boyce. I currently serve, well, through the end of the month, as a board member for the Delaware County Regional Wastewater District. Uh, this is the end of this four-year term for me. Um, I feel like it's been a very, very productive year. We settled a new contract with Muncie Sanitary. We, I serve on the Budget and the Finance Committee. This role entails not only your monthly meetings for whomever the board would choose, but you have many other meetings that come up without any notice, basically, other than the ones that we have to give proper notice to, uh, the county and everybody else that wants to attend. Currently, I would like to inform you guys that all of our meetings are open to the public, but we do not have attendance. We really, really strive for people coming and seeing how the board operates, because that's what's important, people being involved. But we haven't seen it at this point. We also have our meetings online on YouTube, so you can view any of our meetings that you want to and you can contact the office. What questions do you have for me?
I don't realize. Yeah, a lot of people don't realize how much goes into wastewater management. Uh,
You do.
Yeah. How you have to go through the trouble to, uh, rebuild systems that are failing because of this age and destruction and stuff and how you, how, uh, population growth tends to overwhelm the system and you have to rebuild it. And there's a lot to give in. I just kind of want to get that out of the public, but it's not just to sit there and put a thumb. There's a lot to it.
That's right, and, um, very much agree with you. I have business background as well as construction background. So when we look at bids that are submitted, um, I can look at a bid and make a somewhat intelligent decision on what's being given to us. So I feel like not only my business background, but my construction background makes me a good candidate for it. Any other questions? I know that you received a letter from our, uh, district director. He was here along with Penny, who's in charge of our office. They had to step out because we needed another CD, our money being applied better, so they were out in the hall. They were gonna speak on my behalf. And Bill Walters, our president, he was going to speak on my behalf too.
Do you live in, do you live in the service area?
I am in Delaware County. I am in the Farmington part of it, which would be that my bill goes through Indiana American Water because Farmington has a special thing that happened a long time ago with Freeman.
I, I'm glad you mentioned it. I was actually gonna ask Mr. Walters if he had a recommendation, so for you to bring that up, I'm glad you said that. I was curious.
Thank you.
Morning Council. Bill Walters, I'm the current president of the Regional Wastewater District. I would very much express my concern that we would love to have Joe back. She is exactly what she told you in everything here. Helped us through the last, I've been president the last two years with our finance, our budget, and the negotiations. She is an integral part, her business background. Uh, she digs deep into the numbers, asks a lot of questions, even with the CPAs and with the bond, you know, when the, uh, developers are in there, she digs deep into the numbers, so you could not go wrong with, uh, reappointing Joe back to the board.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Amber, would you like to speak again?
In the email that I sent to Council and Denise, um, I actually only was interested in the Delaware County Redevelopment Commission, so I'm not sure how my name got on here.
It may have been my fault.
Okay, I saw that and I was like, um, I don't remember saying that, uh, but I love Joe too, so.
Okay, thank you for the endorsement.
So you're officially withdrawn, correct?
All right, we'll scratch you off and, uh, roll call. We pick one on this one.
Mr. Flanagan.
Joe?
Hughes.
Joe Boyce.
Mr. Cantz.
Joe Boyce.
Mr. Mokel.
Joe Boyce.
Mr. Webb.
I'm with Joe Boyce.
Mr. Wyatt.
Joe Boyce.
Mr. Piper.
Joe Boyce. Great. Thank you for serving again.
You got a good endorsement when one candidate drops out, but that's hard to overcome.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Moving on to Yorktown Economic Development Commission, we have one and we only had one person, uh, that I could find that, that interested. Did you put your name in? Did you send Denise?
I do. Yeah, a lot of mine. Uh, I don't know, I was, I was like, ooh.
I could look.
Apparently not. Apparently didn't get there.
Yeah, we already, you can be a right.
Well, I will say.
Again, it's the same thing as before. We didn't have a bond issue, so we didn't have to move. That's what.
So, okay, so to Dan's point, he is our current representative on that particular board. Same as the Daleville Economic Development Board. They did not meet this year because there was not a bond issue. Um, so we have, Denise can find anything from Dan. Uh, and then Aubrey Christ does not live in Yorktown, but she was the one person we had listed on our, our spreadsheet.
Should I make the, the recommendation regardless of what Denise finds, that he's our current appointment and he tells us he wants to be reconsidered? Depending on what Denise finds or not.
It's a pleasure of the board.
I say.
I think they're concerned. I think you can vote for every one of them.
All right. Well, then we're just gonna go with Aubrey Christ and Dan Flanagan as our choices. Uh, you pick one. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Uh, Dan Flanagan.
Mr. Hughes.
Dan Flanagan.
Mr. Cantz.
Uh, I love Dan Flanagan. However, um, I am gonna vote for Aubrey Christ, um, primarily for her, um, her wanting to get involved and, and thus far has not been pointing to anything, so I, I will, I will put one vote in for Aubrey.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
I, I am gonna echo, uh, Councilman Flanagan. I also love Mr. Dan, but I'm gonna go with Aubrey as well.
Mr. Wyatt.
Dan Flanagan.
Mr. Piper.
I'm gonna go with Dan since he actually lives in Yorktown. So, thank you, Dan, for your willingness to serve on a board that hasn't met yet. All right, moving on, these are, um, the boards that are, um, the appointees are from the council. The next two are, uh, Community Corrections. I currently serve on that board and am wishing to step off, uh, to free up some time, and Eugene has expressed interest. Is there any other council member interested in serving on Community Corrections? They meet at noon at the Justice Center on odd months. Hearing none, we'll do roll call on Eugene being our representative for Community Corrections.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. Thank you Eugene for serving. Uh, the next is our EMA Advisory Board. Currently Matt Cantz sits on that and is seeking reappointment. Uh, when do you meet? Is it just that needed?
Uh, no, it's, uh, Wednesdays, like the third Wednesday, what is it? Um, tomorrow was the next meeting. I do know.
Oh, here we go.
Morning Council, John Cattino, Merg's Management Director. Our EMAC Board meets on the second Wednesday of even month, so tomorrow.
I didn't have any interest from any other council members. Is anyone interested at this time? Hearing none, roll call on Matt Cantz, serving on the EMA Advisory Board.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, moving on, we have Tax Abatement. Currently sitting on that board is Bill Hughes, Josh Perkins, and Ryan Ballard. Uh, Ryan Ballard did send his resignation to me last week, um, so he is falling off. And Matt Cantz reached out to Joe Barr, who many of us are familiar with. He has great accounting finance, uh, accounting and finance background, um, is serving on this board. I guess, do you wanna do this as a slate?
Let's just spell those three names, right?
Yeah, just let's make it a slate. Let's do the slate of Bill Hughes, Josh Perkins, and Joe Barr.
He's not, he cannot be here, no.
He couldn't be here.
Yeah, he sent an email and I did forward it to everybody last night.
Um, so we'll do the slate of Bill Hughes, Josh Perkins, and Joe Barr. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, thank you Bill for serving on that board again. Uh, next up is Council Attorney. We've been using Bill Beasley Gilkerson for many, many years now. We hire the firm, not the attorney.
I would, I would, I'd like to move that we redo the contract with Beasley Gilkerson as Council Attorney for 2024 with the, uh, an increase, uh, in the, uh, annual stipend to seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. It represents approximately a ten percent increase. As I mentioned during budget hearings, there had been no increase since before I was Council Attorney. I became Council Attorney in 2017, and I think that the, uh, stipend before that, for at least a couple of years before that, had not changed. So it's, it's been at least seven or eight years since there's been any change in that, and I think, uh, I think it is warranted.
Second.
All right, motion by Bill, second by Matt. Any questions or discussion?
Is this something that we can increase the payment today when we renew the contract, or is that something that has to be done?
It's paid out of our contractual services line, so.
We have sufficient money budgeted in contractual services to, uh, make the.
My only concern is, you know, we're here in here a week and we've, we've got five hundred county employees and something didn't get salary increases and I don't really like the taste. I feel like it kind of leave a bad taste in their mouth though. Give somebody a ten percent increase, but so many people.
County employees did receive increases in some of those other seven or eight years that the Council Attorney has never received.
All right, any additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
I'm gonna vote no.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, well, thank you everyone. That concludes the, uh, board appointments portion of our meeting. So moving on, I don't believe the council has any old business. Moving on to new business, we all received, um, a 2024 meeting calendar from Denise. So at this time, we'll entertain the approval of the 2024 meeting calendar.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Dan. Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right, uh, and next on the list, so we were working on the calendar and an email was going back and forth between Denise and Bill and I, um, because our council rules actually state. because our council rules actually state that we do our election of our council officers the first part of January in a special meeting. Um, but since this is a non-election year, no one's changing on this board. And so we also have in our council rules that if we have a unanimous vote, we can go ahead and do that today and then not have to meet January 2nd. So.
Think to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Ryan. Roll call on suspending the rules.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Smoakel. Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Ms. Swyad.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Fantastic. Thank you. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to nominate someone to serve as President of the Council for 2024.
Motion to, Ms. Jessica continues in that role?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Matt. Any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cant.
Yes.
Mr. Smoakel. Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Ms. Swyad.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Motion to Mr. Cant be the pro tem?
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Bill, for Matt Cant to be our President Pro Tem. Any other nominations? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes. Ms. Cant.
Epstein. Don't poke yourself.
Mr. Smoakel. Ms. Swab.
Yes.
Ms. Swyad.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thank you for your willingness to serve. All right, this time, uh, any elected officials or department heads who'd like to speak?
Congratulations to you, Madam President, and the rest of the appointees on their positions. So Brad Bookout, um, I, I watched the council meeting last month, and I thought with new members on the board, it was probably good for me to come here today and share with all of you kind of my role with tax abatements and answer any questions if, if that is so be. So I made some quick notes. I'd like to read through a few things if you would allow me to.
Sure.
Could you move that, Michael, so we can use the social media and make sure you catch it?
Sure.
Thank you. Are we good? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
So Indiana Code, as, as many of you know, I know there's new, new members and a lot of you are well aware of this. So please forgive me if I'm saying the same thing over that you already know, but Indiana Code allows for tax abatements to be filed by any corporation or business that's bringing new personal property, equipment, or machinery, or a new building development or new investment in the county has to be brought from outside of the state of Indiana. That keeps companies from moving their equipment around from city to city and continuing to get abatements on that same equipment. When a company files for a tax abatement, they fill out a tax abatement application. About ten years ago, I created the tax abatement application form that you all are familiar with and that you have seen. They also submit an SB 1 along with that, along with a map of the area and a hundred and fifty dollar filing fee made payable to the Treasurer of Delaware County. When I receive one of those, I then share that with the President of the Council, generally copy your attorney on that as well, and ask for or request approval to have a tax abatement committee meeting with the body that you had just established. So we then have that meeting with a favorable recommendation of the President to have the meeting. The committee then makes a recommendation, either favorable or unfavourable, to bring to you. Once that is done, I generally contact the attorney of your council and a resolution for an economic revitalization area and a, and a resolution for the tax abatement is prepared. So that has come in different ways before. Your attorney has prepared those. In some instances, the company that we're working with, their attorney has prepared those. In some instances, I've tried to save you money and use my standard template, and I've prepared those as well for you. So those come in three different ways. I appear at the meeting and I read verbatim from the tax abatement application. So if you go back, for instance, on the solar projects in September and October of 2022, you'll see on those meetings I read verbatim from the application that is submitted to you. The council makes a decision on the abatement and is up to the company to make the investment and submit their follow-up forms in order to the reporting forms in order to receive the abatement. We have had situations where abatements have been approved and the companies did not complete their paperwork afterwards and subsequently did not get their abatements. Companies are allowed to have a ten-year abatement, one hundred percent. We never recommend to a company to go a hundred percent for ten years. It's generally a phased-in abatement. Sometimes it's five-year phased-in. Sometimes it's ten-year phased-in abatement. I don't go around the county as an economic development official offering abatements to companies. That does, that does not happen. We receive abatement requests. Just like a, as a homeowner, I'm allowed to file for a homestead property tax exemption. Companies are allowed to, if they make this investment, fill out the form and submit it to the county. I also, with the solar projects, neither the commissioners nor myself, we don't identify the locations for those solar projects. When the, those companies came to Delaware County to sign leases, that was in 2020, and the county commissioners and myself did not know that those companies were signing leases on land. Not until February of 2021, where we made aware of their interest to file a tax abatement in Delaware County. So to kind of summarize here, um, I want you to know that, you know, we do follow the guidelines of, of Indiana Code, of what's set forth by the state regarding the ERAs and regarding the terms of the abatement and how we advertise public meetings for those. Um, I work within the framework of those guidelines. I'm happy to continue to work with your tax abatement committee in an advisory role to gather information and get, to give that information to the tax abatement committee. So I'll continue to do that. Uh, I've met with Mr. Hughes. We had a good conversation about what you want as a body for information to your tax abatement committee regarding the solar projects, and I'll be happy to cooperate with them on that regard. So I'm happy to answer your questions.
Brad, I got a question. Just relative to the, uh, abatement committee, the, the logistics, you're in advisory role, but you're the one that calls the abatement committees together.
You, your president gives the authorization for your abatement committee.
No, I mean, when they actually meet.
Yes.
So, um, I guess my question is, like, um, are you, as the economic development need for the county, like, what's, how's it, what's the dynamic?
Independent of me, they can conduct their own meetings and they can bring forth the information and present it to you. They are your appointed members to do that.
Right.
I have done this role to help out the process because in the past, there was no one doing that. There was no application form. There was no one putting out minutes and inviting those people together. So I stepped in and assumed that role to try to assist.
Okay.
Brad, I just wanted to clarify. I think you said that, that solar tax abatement was approved in September, October, 2022. It was 2021.
2021. The leases were signed in 2020. The county was not made aware of that. Those, those leases were being signed with property owners in different locations. My first communication with the solar companies was in February of 2021. Yes, you're correct. 2021.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no issue with the abatement being provided to the companies doing the improvements and investment, even if they don't own the land or other than that lease that maybe they have in place. Is that accurate?
That's correct. They, they, they're asking for abatements on equipment or machinery that they own that they are paying taxes on.
Do you have the ability to abate taxes on both real estate but also equipment? Person, person's property?
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, any other elected officials, department heads? All right, quite a bunch today. All right, moving on to public comment. We had two people sign up. Please keep your comments to around three minutes, and we'll start with Cheryl Sweeney signed up first.
Before we do that, uh, Bill, can you just announce the tax abatement committee meeting? Or did that we're gonna have one?
We are meeting, uh, the first week of January.
Hello, uh, Cheryl Sweeney. Uh, I was just calling, I was trying to ask for an update on the tax abatement issue with the solar. It sounds like you're gonna meet in January?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Well, I encourage you to keep making progress on that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and next up is David Mauk.
For that purpose, anyone who has information that they would wanna submit, uh, to the tax abatement, can please do so through me or through the Auditor's Office.
David, you're up.
Okay, my name's David Mauk, seventy-two thousand north. County Road 500 West. Uh, when I get done with what I wanted to say, I wanna, I wanna ask, how do you get an ERA? But I'll start off with, I know that the, the solar setback has a little bit to do with the county council. But the proponents of solar insist on keep bringing it up. I'm wanting to bring it, bring up the five-hundred-foot setbacks on the solar panels to the property line. I wanna set everybody straight coming from a farmer. Illegal women voters in Sioux Arrington, coached by Joe Russell, claim the five-hundred-foot setback would totally be wasted ground that would be too narrow to farm. Well, I guarantee you, every farmer in Delaware County have fields with five-hundred-foot strips or less that they farm. I farm farms that have strips of a hundred-foot or less, and we still farm it, and we have big equipment. Farmers don't let these areas grow up in weeds. They don't bush hog it. They farm it. The proponents are just trying to pull the wool over your eyes. Joe Russell says he's done the math, and after thirty years, it would be account, it would account for fifty thousand acres of wasted acres of land. He is wrong. It would be fifty thousand acres of ground producing food for our world. That production would also bring in more tax dollars through the county. The solar proponents keep wanting to bring up the five-hundred feet while Commissioner King has already said that that's already been set, the five-hundred feet. The only thing on the table is the cap on the acres of Delaware County solar. If they continue to push this five-hundred-foot rule, we will need to open up talks on the property value guarantee. Five-hundred feet is easily farmable. Don't let them fool you. If anyone wants to show, if, if anybody wants me to show them five-hundred-foot or less farms in Delaware County, come on over. Thank you. So back to the, so how, how do you get the ERA? That's, that's my question, if anybody wants to answer it. It's been answered before, but we just wanna clarify it again. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only two that we had signed up. Is there anyone else here who'd wish to speak?
I'm Sioux Arrington. I live at thirty-two hundred Westbrook Drive. I didn't sign up to speak, but since my name has already been mentioned here, I would just like to repeat that that five-hundred-foot setback from neighboring properties is way too large. Uh, if you look at what the state is recommending, and for those who don't care if they are a, um, community, a, a solar energy, community-ready, um, entity, it is voluntary, the setbacks. In fact, the whole thing, the, the state has an entire, um, set of standards that they recommend. But if you want to become a solar energy-ready community, then those standards are required. So I would recommend that all of you, if this is of interest to you, go to the website of the Indiana Office of, of Energy Development, and you can see what the standards are. You can look, compare them with what has been proposed and, um, voted on here in Delaware County, uh, and judge for yourself. The state is, this Office of Energy Development is new. We just, at the State Legislature, uh, voted to form it, uh, in this last session, and it is in operation now. It was started in July, I believe. But that's the entity that will have grants for all kinds of energy development. Some of it is, um, you know, rehabbing your house. Some of it is, um, going to be, um, for entities like counties who are interested in solar projects to help them fund their part of the process. So that's what I wanted to let you know, um, that the state does recommend a setback of two hundred and fifty feet, not from the property line, but from the edge of the nearest solar panel to the dwelling, their outside, um, wall. So that's the recommended from the state, and if you wanna be a solar-ready, solar energy-ready community, it's the requirement.
Sioux, can I ask a couple of questions? Um, I have read the Office of Energy Development components, um, that, that the whole notion of being solar-ready, uh, to your point, has some, some guidelines, I think, from Purdue and whatever. But currently, there's no funds associated with that, correct? So even certified communities or communities that are designated that, there's no budget dollars gonna be delivered to any county currently, correct?
The, the current budget that we passed last year did not include state funds. No. Um, I understand that there are maybe grants, uh, federal money that will probably come through that, um, department.
And then I, I noticed the, the dollar amount is like a per-megawatt number that you guys may be looking at providing, but it's pretty low, right? I mean, there's not, right now, there's no, there's no windfall coming to the county to put in solar fields currently. Is that fair?
Um, I'm not familiar with the dollar amount, so if you've looked at it, you're probably correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I might also say that because this is a new program, uh, I don't know how many, uh, counties are already certified, but I imagine they'll all be looking at, especially, I mean, we have a budget year in 2025. And so if the state puts money into it, I think it's a good idea to be ready to be able to receive it.
All right. Well, thank you, Representative. Uh, any other additional comments? Me first, Mike. Be sure to state your name for us.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Harold King, eighteen, three hundred, North eight fifty west, Gaston. You know, the current solar ordinance that is under discussion was written by Marla Moody and the head of the energy company. There was zero protection for me because I'm not participating. Five-hundred feet sounds like a lot to some people. It's less than two football fields. Now, that's only for me if I'm not participating. And five-hundred may seem like a lot, but if it's next to my house, it's not that far. So again, you got a lot of responsibility, and, uh, all I can say is I don't want it that close to my house, and I don't think you would either. Thank you.
Matt, when is the re, um, commission meeting on this? Tomorrow, did you say?
The planning commission meeting is tomorrow night at six o'clock in this room, I believe. Yes.
So if you're available, you'll want to come to that as well. The, uh.
Planning commission meeting is tomorrow night. I think you guys are all aware, probably.
I have a point of information on, you know, the previous meeting, I made a motion to get it back to the tax abatement, to review, understand that that meeting is scheduled early January. The second phase of that is for us to have a, a meeting to possibly hear from, from the solar companies and to discuss what, uh, recommendations from the tax abatement committee. Bill, Mr. Hughes, or, 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 or Piper, maybe one of you can help me with this. Are we going to do that in our January meeting, or are we gonna wait until after the abatement hearing and then schedule a time?
Did you, did you or Ben speak to the attorney for the solar company? I was obviously gone after the meeting, but I did go back and watch, uh, on the replay, um, and I believe she was going to come provide information or contact.
I, I reached out to her after the Thanksgiving holiday. She sent the information that she spoke about, uh, in the meeting to me, and I've shared that with Bill and the tax abatement committee. Um, and they meet in January to discuss that, along with, I think they're gonna move back over the, uh, I don't want to speak for them, but I think the, the plan is to go back over the, um, the Baker Tilly report and some of the, basically the entire thing, just go back over it, and then, uh, ask for additional information as comes up in that committee meeting. And then all of that, I think eventually, the obvious, the obvious goal is to report that back to the council, for the council to consider.
I would, I would answer this, Ray. We would, sometime after a meeting, report back to all members of the council, and then, to the pleasure of the council, if they want to schedule a special meeting, or invite, uh, participants to come to the January regular meeting. I, I have no opinion on that one. We'll be able to, we'll be able to do that.
Sure, they probably won't be able to get an opinion till we get your report. Probably won't be able to get an opinion till we get your report from the, the committee.
I, I want to act expeditiously. I don't want to drag this down.
I agree.
Give us a week or so, and we'll have something to do.
So, to be safe, if you're doing this in early January, do you think that we would be able to have a valuable conversation at our January meeting, or perhaps a special meeting at the end of the January meeting, somewhere along those lines?
Yeah, I, I think that, that, in my view, that should be doable.
That's what I'd like to do.
And, and to be fair to Mr. Hughes, he had attempted to schedule that meeting already. There's just a lot of moving parts and calendars, and that was the first date that everybody was available.
Time of the year is a little tricky.
To Bill, to Bill's point, um, I submitted a laundry list of questions for their committee to, to try to get answers to, and I would suggest if anybody has, I'll forward them to everybody else, but I would suggest that, you know...
Very thorough email.
I would suggest that you pass, pass those along if, uh, ahead of that, to help Bill and that committee, you know, try to get as many answers as possible.
All right. Any additional public comments? All right, here are none. We will move on to comments from the council. Anyone have anything to share?
I'd like to thank, uh, Madam President and Denise and Matt for the format, helped to, uh, straighten out our board appointments. Uh, I hope this can be updated now that we have our new appointments, and so we can have it as a reference, uh, tool during the year. But thank you for all the hard work.
I've already asked Matt to, uh, schedule some time with me at the beginning of the year to go through. Um, I know the commissioners had sent me their board appointment list, and so has the city, so trying to get a better conglomerate of everything, going all the moving pieces, just so we have an idea of who's already sitting there, because I know there was an issue last year where the commissioners appointed someone, and the mayor appointed the same person. Um, so that might just help clear some things up, um, for all of us, because there's a lot of moving pieces when it comes to boards, and who gets to make the appointments to which boards and all of that. So, we're going to work, um, on, on getting that cleaned up. Um, anything else from council?
Yeah, like, um, a couple things. Number, number one, again, I want to thank everybody for coming in. Um, I know it's not easy coming in a ninety-minute meeting. You know, everybody has a job and has to work, so to have this room full, it doesn't go unnoticed. The second thing I wanted to say is that, uh, my appreciation for all the board members who have served up to this point, including those from the community who put your names in to be considered, is something that, uh, we as a council, and me personally, we've been trying to increase that participation, and I think we're having some success there, you know? We're, we're moving in the right direction, going that way. So, thank you for everyone for putting your names in half of that. And, uh, for those who have chosen, we appreciate you offering your service for the next year.
Hey, I, I got, like, I, I asked, how do you get an ERA? I just wanted to explain to you.
Well, I'm on record as saying I, I, I think that was a mistake, so I don't, I'm not sure what answer I would give to me. I've already said that, uh...
All right, so, well, hold on, if we, we've already gone through our public comment portion.
I mean, I'll, I'll... True. Yeah, and that is a, I mean, that's an explanation probably for some other time, but the reality is that an abatement has to be tied to that ERA, the state statute component. So, there's not one without the other, um, is my understanding. If anybody could correct me if I'm wrong. You are correct. And, and, and to be fair, almost everybody up there wasn't really a part of that, just really just me. I was here for that. Um, you know, so that, that's part of the question at hand relative to the committee that they're gonna be reviewing.
But we all know that's all, I'm wrong. Getting an ERA around like three hours.
All right, I think, yep. All right. And then, I think Ben has...
Oh, uh, I was, I was a face. Okay. Uh, I just wanted to continue on to say, in addition to citizens who decide to get involved in boards and committees, it's up to us to offer the least path of resistance for, to make those options available to you. I'm someone who also believes that it's important to get as many people as possible to get involved in the community, whether it be running for boards, running for community, or running for office. We have an election coming up and, and, you know, primary coming up, and I'm hoping that we have, um, a good turnout. Uh, the reason why I'm bringing this up is I, I, I wanted to share just a little frustration that I'm having with the, with the state situation. Without a, without a, a law passed that if you wanted to run for office, you had to vote in a certain primary, your primary, uh, for your party two consecutive years. Or not consecutive, but your last two votes had to be in that primary, and that law was recently struck down by a Indiana judge as unconstitutional. And our Secretary of State is, is appealing that order, and our Attorney General is appealing that order, and, um, just as a council member in Delaware County, uh, I'm, I'm very frustrated at the political gatekeeping that goes on with those types of things, and I really wish, if anyone gets any messages, gets this message, to, to leave, leave it alone. The judge has made the order, and we should make it easier for people to run for office, not make it more difficult for people to run for office. But given the example, you folks out here in the solar, there's people who are in this room who've never thought about running for office, who had their lives impacted in some way, and they said, you know what, I'm gonna run for office, and then they find out they can't run for office because they haven't voted in the last couple primaries or whatever. It shouldn't be that way, where, you know, you have a constitutional right to run for, for office. So, uh, I just wanted to share my frustration with that, and I hope our Secretary of State and our Attorney General, uh, decides to not challenge the judge's ruling and allow that law to go back to where anyone can run, as long as you voted in the previous primary, as it was in years previous. So, I just wanted to say that, and, um, I encourage you all to get involved. So, thank you very much.
So, a re, a revitalization area as defined by Indiana Code six dash one point one, dash twelve point one, dash one, uh, is an area which means any area within the corporate limits of a city, town, or county, in this case, county, um, which has become undesirable for or impossible of normal development and occupancy because of the lack of development, cessation of growth, deterioration of improvements or character of occupancy, age, obsolescence, standard, uh, buildings, or other factors which have impaired values or prevent a normal development of property or use of property. The term economic revitalization area also includes an area of land classified as agricultural land for property tax purposes, that is, as a condition of being designated, an ERA will be predominantly used for agricultural purposes for a period specified by the, by the designating body. Uh, and then pursuant to IC six dash one point one, dash twelve point one, uh, dash two, it is up to, in this case, the county council to decide if an area is an ERA, and that is what was done in that, uh, in that resolution that was passed back in, I believe it was two thousand, or twenty twenty-one. So, it has the definition. It is up to the council to determine if the area is an ERA and make it such, and that is what happened. So, people may disagree with that determination, but it is, the council is prerogative to make that determination, and that was done properly.
Any other council members?
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas and/or Happy Holidays, for those of you don't celebrate.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody for coming also. Appreciate you.
And then I just have a few things. So, um, Ryan talked about people getting involved and wanting to serve on boards. There are a ton of other boards in this community outside of county council, the city, um, the mayor has board appointments, the city council has board appointments. So, if you live within the city limits, you can apply for those boards. The county commissioners have board appointments. Um, but there are outside of, yeah, outside of politics, there are a ton of other, or government, I should say, uh, there are a ton of other boards and organizations that are dying to get more people involved. So, if you have that servant's heart, I encourage you to ask your local clubs and organizations if they're needing any assistance, and possibly joining those boards as well. Um, tons of holiday events going on in the community, so be sure to check on websites and social media, because a lot of great things going on to do with your friends and family. And with that, I wish you all a happy and healthy 2024. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Plankton.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Gantz.
Yes.
Mr. Mokel. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Mr. Piper.
Yes. All right. We'll see you next year. Thank you, everyone.